You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, we're gonna call the La Porte County Council regular meeting for February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four to order. We're gonna have a moment of silence. Mike, would you like?
A moment of silence for Mary Ann Listensky, who passed away, I think it was last Friday, longtime, she was retired but a longtime employee and dedicated employee with the La Porte County. And I think she was, if I remember right, clerk's office, so please a moment of silence.
Everybody, please stand for the pledge first.
Mark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, and freedom.
Thank you, cell phones. Everybody make sure they silence their cell phones. Roll call, madam auditor.
Councilman Mullenauer.
President.
Councilman Keel.
President.
Councilman Karanka.
President.
Councilman Novak.
President.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
President.
Councilman Yagowski.
President.
Councilman Cunningham.
President.
Thank you. Approval of the February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four agenda.
Mr. President, so moved.
Yeah, we have one correction. Under new business, we need to add an item C for the La Porte County Surveyors Office for an instrument carrier as the title of that position, the higher replacement position.
You accept that, Mr. Yagowski?
I do, thank you.
Mr. Rosenbaum seconded. All those in favor say aye. Was there any other correction? All those in favor say aye again. Those opposed, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Approval of the January twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four minutes.
I'd like to make approve it, but there's one adjustment on page seven. Under number two, it says, consider motion support regarding control of a spongy moth. And there's a double I, no, a number I. Motion to support not to exceed forty thousand made by Mr. Rosenbaum and seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum and seconded by Mr. Karanka. Obviously, I couldn't second it, so.
He finally found out what the cause of all the problems are. He's doing everything himself.
So the by Mr. Rosenbaum and should be removed.
So we'll make that correction? Any other corrections or additions?
No.
There are none?
We didn't have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open.
Good evening. Steve Hallowfield, six, seven, eight, two east, one hundred south, Mill Creek. Last week, Mr. Gamarosa sponsored a workshop with the citizens and RWE Renewables. In my opinion, the citizens are left with more questions than answers after that meeting. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to attend that. If the council has the ability, and I think you do, to apply pressure to the members of the Plan Commission and the BZA concerning this approval or the strengthening of our La Porte County solar ordinance, please do so. There's a number of people that are speaking out against this. It's a loss, a tremendous loss of farmland. They're up to over almost five thousand acres now and you're still beating on doors. Also, since the project is only expected to produce four full-time jobs, which may not even be local workers, I do not think this warrants a tax abatement. As of now, they have not asked for one, but when I questioned the lady about that, she said we're not, everything is on the table currently right now. The number of people that were in attendance should prove to all members of government that this is not a good project for La Porte County. While it is the right of any private property to reduce as they wish, it is not their right to devalue a neighbor's property, nor obstruct their enjoyment and pursuit of happiness on their own. And we've got research that says this is devalues neighboring properties and, you know, it's just not a good thing. There is no guarantee the company will be around in thirty to forty years to conduct the cleanup, they claim, nor any proof that the bond that they have will be enough to do that. Myself personally, as a farmer, you take ground of production for thirty to forty years and drive pilings into it, concrete, everything else, you're never gonna bring it back to production. So I would hope that you guys keep this in your mind and I'll be back again next time probably.
It was a packed meeting. I was out in the hall because as far as I could get.
One more quick other thing, myself and another community member, we're going to be putting together a public meeting for the people to come and ask questions so we can, you know, get our strategy together. When I get a date for all that, I will invite you guys. You're more than happy to come and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak from the public? Anybody from the public? Anybody else in the crowd? Last chance. Public comment is now closed. Department heads, any department heads that would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ella Bilderback, La Porte County Recorder. This being the beginning of the year, I thought I'll let you guys know how we did. So here's some numbers for you. My office collected last year six hundred thousand eight, six hundred, eight thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents. So out of that total amount, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, one forty went to general fund. Thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine to security protection fund. That's the one that we use to make sure that none of the social security numbers are in the documents that they're redacted properly. Next one here we have is the recorders fund and our perpetuation fund got about the same amount you guys did, one hundred and ninety-six thousand. Enhance access fund, one hundred and twelve. Surveyors Corner Fund, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five. Elected Official Training Fund, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. And State Mortgage Recording Fund, eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven. So our numbers are done, definitely. The interest rates certainly affected us. Fortunately, our perpetuation fund is healthy. And as you know, my office covers a huge chunk of my budget, pretty much eighty percent, I would say, maybe. The only things that it's paid out of general fund is my salary and the chief deputy. Everything else, we pay for ourselves and that's, what was it? Three hundred thirty-three, no, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's the budget for my office and that includes the salaries, everything else. So I'm very happy that we can do this for the county. Also, I wanted to let you know, I started working on the dissipating the books, deed books in the vault. Fifty are done, twenty-five more are in the process. And five of the oldest plant books have been restored.
How many are there total? Seventy, about seventy-five?
Oh, deed books?
Yeah.
Oh, no, there's hundreds.
So you still got a long list to go.
Only to a certain extent was the paper made with the acid still in it. It was in the eighties that the finally we realized, oh, that's not a good idea. And we started making acid-free paper. So we only have to go so far. And there's ways to test to make sure that we don't go too far with the process. Unfortunately, that's something that's available. Because if we just went by dates, that's not necessarily very accurate. So also, we back indexed since I started, over four hundred thousand documents. And if I were to do it by hiring somebody, we're talking more than six hundred thousand dollars because it's per document charge. And so now that we slow down with the recordings, that's what we focus on during the day. So I'm pretty happy because I'm thinking that whatever I started with, by the end of the year, it should be done. So.
Great.
Pretty exciting. So that's about it for me.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good report.
Good evening.
Good evening. Eric Fenchmaker, Administrator of the La Porte County EMS. Just a couple of things to brief you guys on. We've gone through almost four thousand hours worth of overtime so far this year. We've been short four people, two medics, two EMTs. We did hire two EMTs that started today. So it'll take them ten shifts, which is about one month to get through their orientation and be on their own. We've also had up to seven people off at one time due to workman's comp and/or FMLA leave. So it's been a bit of a struggle here the first two months. So in the near future, we'll be back for some overtime money. We're looking at almost thirty thousand in overtime of pay period right now. So we're trying to get these people back to work that are on workman's comp and also get these positions filled. But just so you guys know that that will be coming in the near future, what that figure looks like, I don't know offhand. Something we're working on currently, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. If you have any questions.
Do you have a rough estimate by chance of what percentage of your overtime appropriation has been expended so far?
About fifty, fifty percent. I think the first that is actually in, forgive me for not having it in front of me, but the, is it a one hundred that the overtime budget would be in? That's a hundred and five thousand, that's gone. The second is out of lit and it's ninety-eight thousand and we'll be into that in this next pay period.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Yagowski?
Not getting too much discussion because I know some of this stuff can't be discussed, but one of the issues that we talked about almost two years ago, most of the council members, we were in meetings with it, understand that this workman's compensation that we talked about would be a huge, if we could just change some of the rules that we ask commissions to go forward with. Unfortunately, we haven't seen any progress.
You want us to call another workshop on that?
That would probably, because of what we're talking about, would probably be whatever you want to do, but.
An exec session?
Yes. This is as far as I can go with the discussion.
Could you just remind me and we'll talk about getting that scheduled for our next meeting?
That'd be okay with everybody?
I just want to give a kudos to our guys and gals for really stepping up to fill the overtime. Luckily, we've been able to do that, but it's a lot of extra hours on them, you know, stress on them, their families, everything else, but they've done a heck of a job to help keep things covered and running. So the other thing, EMS week is coming up in May. It's our fiftieth anniversary. So we'll be coming for, I guess it would be an additional appropriation out of our donation account to pay for some of those activities, which I'll outline and get to you, but just so you all know that that's coming up too.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other department heads? Are there any department heads on Zoom? Any department heads on Zoom? There are none? Liaison reports. Earl?
Wave.
Mark?
Wave.
Mike?
I've met with several, nothing new to report at this time.
Mike? Yes, I get just a couple of things. February eighth, I attended DMA, which is the Emergency Management Agency Advisory Board Meeting. And I, as a few of you, you also attended the solar meeting that was spoken here a little earlier. And just wanted to comment, I think that was very, very informative. Young lady that presented it was, she was, she knew the answers and presented it well. And also, I was very impressed that everyone was very respectful during the meeting. There wasn't any outbursts or anything, so. And then one other thing, I know this, I discussed or mentioned earlier or late last year, and that was something to honor Dick Reel at Creek Ridge Park. And I just wanted to let you know that I've had a discussion with Jeremy Sivecki, the Director of the Park Department. And we're gonna get our heads together here probably, probably in April and see what we can do about some ideas that we can get to do something out there for him.
Have you considered the fairgrounds? Pioneerland as a place for honoring him as well? There might be more traffic to fairgrounds in Pioneerland than there is.
Get a lot of stuff for Pioneerland too.
True, that's true. I never, I'm aware of that, but I never, yeah, I never got that in my thoughts. So maybe, maybe something there. And I know he was very instrumental with Creek Ridge. Maybe we could just do, if we did, I don't know, Jeremy and I talked maybe something like a gazebo or something, if that was needed at the, at the fairgrounds. And it probably does. So maybe there's something like that. Or and then maybe something at Creek Ridge, like even if it's just a bench with this pull of the plaque or something.
If Mike, same thing, like you mentioned with gazebo, you know, we've had the prisoners builder, you know, the work release type projects or something like that.
Yeah, Jeremy had some ideas, right?
Yes, we could, I know that we've done it in the past. We did one in Michigan City, I know.
At the courthouse.
Courthouse.
Eagle scouts sometimes are looking for projects like that.
Definitely. Alright, yeah, discuss that in April then.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it.
Alright, Justin? This month, I attended a demonstration meeting about new software for the building department. I attended a board of finance meeting. I traveled to Washington DC and attended the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference, particularly of interest to our county. I attended a session on earmarks and how we might go about pursuing those. Attended a session that talked about the Inflation Reduction Act Grants. And I had the opportunity to networks with other attendees from other Indiana counties that were in Washington DC at the same time. After that, NACO conference, I attended the National Association of Regional Councils Conference in my capacity as a member of NERC. I had the opportunity to moderate a session with the Federal Railroad Administrator. And before the session, I spoke with him about blocked rail crossings. And after the session, Mayor Dermody was able to corner him and do the same thing. So we had both ends of the session talking about blocked rail crossings and some other issues that are relevant to us here in La Porte County. So La Porte County was definitely on his case. I attended a South County Community Coalition Meeting. Councilman Novak was there last Monday. And I also met with some consultants working with the Northwestern Indiana Forum on a project to improve the business environment in rural communities. And finally, for one of my liaison assignments, Mr. Yule asked me to share that March first through seventh is weights and measures week. So they have a week.
Okay, March first and then seventh.
You think they'd only have like a day?
No, they have a whole week.
A whole week.
When is the county council day?
I don't know. We get like a couple of minutes or something, maybe.
Let's see here. So we tend the RDC meeting just a couple of days after our last council meeting, including a special session with information session regarding a potential project out in KOP. Worked with building maintenance regarding incoming quotes for the sewer line replacement underneath the annex building. Just trying to get the bids organized to where they can have something reviewed by the council. Worked with County Clerk, Commissioner Gamarosa, and building maintenance regarding potential storage locations for incoming hardware for the May primary. She's looking, Clerk Stevens is looking for somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand square feet by my estimate that's going to be needed.
So that's something we really need to work on.
Yes.
Because I think, when did you say they're coming?
That's coming, I believe, the tail end of April, if not first of May.
Right. So they'll be probably sitting in this room if we don't have a place to put them, so.
And then lastly, I want to thank the La Crosse Volunteer Fire Department. After my comments regarding the Pulse app that they were talking about with Emergency nine-one-one for the AED training, they reached out to me and asked me to join their, I think it's annual recertification class for CPR and AED. So.
Got a card?
I have incoming.
Yeah, okay. Congratulations. That's great. I attended the building, the complex construction meeting, toured it this morning. I did take some pictures and I'll send it out to the council. I urge everyone to go out and take a look at it. The fifth floor is pretty much done. The furniture that was, that was not damaged is up there in the, in the prosecutor's office. Their Kemp's is installing, putting desks together for the building department. So it's really coming together. I think they got to finish up the bathroom. So by the end of this month, or just into next month, everything should be pretty much done. There's still a little, some fine tuning things that they're waiting on. The water line from the basement going up still has to be done. This Saturday, they're gonna have a, an outage. So the water's gonna be turned off. We made arrangements with the nine-one-one center to where they can use the facility and do everything. But they're gonna turn all the water off to replace that riser pipe coming up from the basement. So it's getting real close, but I urge you to take a look at it. It's looking really nice. And then fourth floor is looking really well. And the third floor is still two months behind. So the one, every one's a month behind. So with that, the RDC, we're still working. Hopefully, we got an announcement soon with the rail connection of the CSX on the south. I know Limbore's still working on the connection with the CN over the bridge. That's all coming together. We got a lot of businesses out there. They're looking to come out there. So we're spending a lot of time entertaining businesses and talking to people. FMEC, the, once a month, I think I mentioned this before, we're meeting to, for a comprehensive plan of the fairgrounds. It's a five-year, ten-year, fifteen and twenty-year plan. And we've really got some great ideas. We just gotta come up with some money. So it'd be good. Yes.
Sorry, I have a question. So how do we stand? I know the insurance company wasn't willing to go before Monte for the three floors. How do we stand on that deal? Are they still contesting it yet?
Would you like to give us an update on the insurance company, Mr. Guy?
We recently received a check, but it's probably gonna be close to the last check. Still, it's, we're still in the same position that I discussed in the exec session.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr.
That concludes my report. Moving on, is there any correspondence? Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two, an ordinance establishing a petty cash fund for adult probation.
Good evening. Bob Schuster with La Porte County Adult Probation. Mr. Ira is in Seattle, so I'm covering for him tonight. We're requesting this because we provide bus passes for people that have problems getting to and from the courthouses or the community corrections or for drug testing, et cetera. According to our notes, Mr. Ira's been dealing with this, both Michigan City and La Porte only take cash for the, for the bus passes. So that puts us in a predicament to where we don't have cash on hand to be able to purchase those for our offenders.
Do we need to, since it's an ordinance, we're gonna, sure, motion to read by title only?
Well, hold on one second. So are y'all gonna do one reading or two readings? Is this an emergent, you know, we, we've, it's sort of becoming the rule that you all are doing one reading, where it's really only, you know, suspending the rule is really only for times where you need to suspend the rule. So it's your call as to what you want to do, but.
I don't think it's an emergency. I think we have time. It is coming out of the probation user fee fund, so.
Alright. So was there a motion?
Motion to read by title only, is that fine?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum for title only. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka.
We started signing it, but.
She needs a back.
She needs that to read it.
She probably wants the ones.
Nevermind.
But we can read it. Oh, you got one? Okay, great.
Anybody can read it if you want.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero two, an ordinance to establish a petty cash fund for adult probation.
What's your preference?
Motion to approve, and then I have a comment after.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham.
My comment is just to let everybody know that it's in the amount of three hundred dollars. So that's it.
And it's a petty cash account, and it's my understanding with talking with the auditor's office, that they would need to show receipts to get it replenished. Right. So it's, there's a check and balance there.
That was our understanding, I'm sure. Mr. Ira or Ms. Redder will touch with you for the particular.
Any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? So we'll hold that over for a second reading in our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero. Can it be a zero zero? Shouldn't it be a zero one?
That's what the previous ones were for the encumbrances.
Okay. Resolution to record outstanding encumbrances from twenty twenty-three carried forward for twenty twenty-four. It's a resolution, we just got one reading anyway, so.
Correct.
Right. What's your preference?
Motion to read by title only.
Motion by Mr. Karanka.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Title only?
Resolution number two zero two four dash zero, a resolution to record outstanding encumbrances from twenty twenty-three carried forward to twenty twenty-four.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve with the president.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Are there any questions or comments? This is just the official action of carrying the money. It was just last year. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Old business. Is there any old business? No old business. Next item. Oh, go ahead. No?
No.
New business. Consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for, one is the auditor's office for roll book clerk. Do you want to do these separate or all at once?
All at once.
The second one is La Porte County Prosecutor Victim's Advocate. And the third one is see surveyor instrument carrier.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any questions or comments? There are none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is discussion of funds for the La Porte County Volunteer Fire Departments. This is a, when we started the public safety let, give credit where credit's due, Mr. Cunningham came up with the idea of giving each of the sixteen volunteer departments something. And we've been doing ten thousand dollars a year. So is this, this is budgeted? So we don't need to take any formal action?
Just let us know when you want the checks for them. We'll get them ordered.
Justin had a, some.
Yeah, I sent an email this afternoon with two recommendations for some minor modifications for our, this program. So last year, we put in place a requirement that they agree to only spend it on certain things such as equipment, training and education purposes. I'm recommending that we expand that for two other things. One, that we ask that each department provide a simple explanation in one or two sentences about what they did with the ten thousand dollars, just so that we know how they're spending it. And we can better promote the program and talk about the good work that they're doing with that fund, those funds. And then the second component is to just require that they are attesting that they're current on their IRS Form nine nineties and Indiana E1 submissions where applicable. Some of the departments are township run and they don't file those. Some of them are nonprofits. There's been in the past, there's been some issues with some departments that are not up to, they're not current with the IRS. We all have to file taxes every year and submit forms to the IRS. We should want our nonprofit fire departments to do the same. By them submitting it, it makes it possible for people to make tax deductible donations to them. It makes it possible for them to be able to apply for certain grants that they might otherwise not be able to apply for. And it just generally makes sure that they're in good financial working order. So it's in our best interest to make sure that they're helping help themselves basically here. So that's what I'm proposing.
I agree with everything that Mr. Keel just suggested. And I actually had one other one that I would add to his, if it's acceptable, that the ten thousand dollar checks be withheld in escrow account if the department is under SBOA investigation until that is cleared up to our satisfaction, the council would vote to approve.
Well, what would be the logistics of that? How would you know that something's under SBOA investigation?
We, we usually see it in the paper. Generally speaking, it's public know, knowledge.
Well, just an investigation would not be.
Well, I understand. Well, that's why I say it would be, an investigation would result in maybe holding it up for three months.
To answer your question, right now, they actually sign on the form that you created last year that says that they are testing they're not under investigation.
Right, they certify it.
So if they were to come to us and say, oh, well, we are under investigation.
They check yes to the box, on that box that I'm under investigation, then.
I'm just saying that we hold that check, not eliminate it.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna edit, we're gonna edit the form that we.
You're correct, correct.
So we'll put an asterisk there if they check a yes, that the funds are gonna be held in escrow.
So I guess my question regarding the, the non-for-profit, what, what, what about the departments that aren't non-for-profit?
Well, the non, the ones that are run by county or township government already are, their government entity is, all of their finances are public. Someone can make a records request and see their ledgers. They're actually sub, more scrutiny.
Why, why, why do we have such an urgency to see all their records? We don't ask for the financials from the.
We wouldn't see all the.
That's what, when they file it, it does make it accessible.
It does, but only like line item, uh, numbers. We're talking about like what they're, what they brought in in total for the year, what they spent out in total, but not like individual checks and things.
I think it's, I think, I understand the concept. I think it's, it's a, especially the one if they're under investigation or some, maybe some shady things going on. I think it's a bad practice to get into when we're over, what's the word I'm looking for?
Overregulating.
Overregulating.
Well, we're not regulating.
And, and we're making them do this when these, these people are volunteers and they're putting out fires and they're saving people's lives. And we're gonna withhold money that they could use for training and materials because we want to see that they're ten ninety, they're non-for-profit and all their other stuff is done. And it's, here's the thing, they're very good at fighting fires and saving people's lives. They're not all that great at doing taxes and filing things, so.
I would, I would submit that they already are required to file Form nine nineties. That's federal law. They're required to file E1s with the state of Indiana. We're just trying to give them the extra oomph to make. We're just trying to give them the extra oomph to make sure they get that done. And to your point, some of them aren't the greatest with their financials. And when things go wrong with financials, it's a distraction from their core mission, which is fighter, fighting fires. We want them to be in good shape financially. That helps them get their mission done.
So for the sake of clarity, gentlemen, as I'm looking at this form, I see the item three that the department, if its finances are not managed by township government, it is current with the IRS Form nine ninety and the Indiana E one submissions. And all it is is an affirmation signature that's tied to item three. Is there anywhere here where we're asking for their paperwork?
Nope.
No, but I I guarantee it, next month's meeting, if we hand out checks next to us, we need, somebody's gonna look and check every one of them. If somebody's late or something's going on, we're gonna be back here again. Mr. Yagowski.
I apologize. Who was the individual who first came to us that, I should say, the head person of all the volunteer fire departments came there? The gentleman?
Andy Snyder.
Mr. Snyder came to us, and we all agreed that he was going to be the central point. We were not going to go and pick on every department. We're not gonna do that stuff. This was an agreement that we all signed up on. I have no problem with it, but then we need to talk to Andy Snyder and say, okay, what are you doing collectively for us? I don't believe we should police every unit that we have a person that we put designated to it. And that's a gentleman that we all, it's been in the minutes we agreed to. So I, I don't have a problem with tasking Mr. Snyder that problem. I have a problem with going after every individual group of this type of thing, because they need to pay attention with their core is, is to fight fires and take care of their.
So, so is it, is a an olive branch, so to speak? Let's say this year, because we, because we really don't know what everybody's status is.
I checked.
I'll see, I knew that, see.
Most of them are in compliance or are close to compliance where they've been filing on.
Many are coming or not.
Just like about two to five. It's hard to tell for sure, because some of them run it through township government, and it's not clear that they do it.
So here's, here's what I suggest. Instead of withholding now, we, we could, we move forward with this, and then we put in place that by next year, everything needs to be done. Because this could take some people some time to get it done. And and you see what I'm saying? Gives us some time to fix it. And by next year, we'll, we'll make that stipulation that next year that it needs to be in compliance. Mr. Rosenbaum.
I, I just want to let everybody know, nine nineties, if you raise more than twenty five thousand dollars, aren't due until May fifteenth, if it's a calendar year. We don't know fiscal, whatever. So it's very hard for them to say that they're in compliant with the prior year if they didn't even file yet. So I think it's a little onerous. I also don't think that we are the police for the IRS. I know what you would like to see is that everybody is up to snuff, and you were able to obtain whatever records you did. And I, I'm in agreement not to do anything this year, but use it as an advice for next year, to have them, to give them.
Would you be comfortable with it, with the form being amended to say that they're, the chief is acknowledging that next year, they're going to be required to have submitted that in order to be eligible?
That they, right, that they have till next year to be in compliance with.
My hope is that they'll go back to their financial officers in their department and say, hey, we have to really get on this.
The issue, the, the issue that I see is the ones that, where the township and the fire departments are working close together. And I, I know they're out there, that there's confusion as to whose job is it to do. So it's not just fire departments, which we have a little control over, but it's also township trustees that we have no control over.
They're already subject to, you know, open door laws, so all of the enactments of the Public Records Act, so all of their financials are already fully disclosable.
Alright. So how do we put that?
So I think doing capsulate, what you suggested, I'd make a motion to approve the ten thousand dollars for each of the sixteen departments with the following stipulations. Each department must sign the same agreement as last year, affirming that they will only use the funds for equipment, training, and education purposes. And then as part of the signed agreement, each department will provide a simple couple-sentence description of what they used the ten thousand dollars for last year. And as part of the signed agreement, departments that are not run by township government must attest that they are, that they acknowledge that in the future, they will need to be current on their Form IRS, IRS Form nine ninety and Indiana E one submissions. And it already has in the form, I believe, Mr. Cunningham's suggestion that they, if they're under investigation, that they have to.
We already have a box on there that they check, I think.
I think that accomplishes that. Is that in.
Can we add a line on the form for them, so they have to sign the form to get their check? So on that form, we can have them just write on that same form what exactly they used the previous money for?
Yeah.
Because we're not.
Yeah, like just some extra lines for them to.
There's a second, motion by.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other questions or comments? You got something, Earl?
After we vote on this.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Now, I would like to bring up the fact that we have to appropriate the money for the fire departments for twenty five and twenty six by December.
This isn't ARP, this is lit. This is public safety lit. It's budgeted in one.
We're gonna do that every year, or we're gonna say we could spend another? I mean, we're right now running a little close on.
It's in the budget, though. We're running low.
This is what I'm saying, yeah, we got, what I'm saying is for twenty five and twenty six, we've got our money, it'll be three hundred twenty thousand dollars. These are the people that are closest to the scene for the average, you know that, you've been there.
I, I would, I would recommend, if I may, I would recommend that we take a look at a lot of things in, in September, and then by October thirty first, we have all.
When we budget, I just want to plant that seed and everybody's.
You can appropriate that.
Prefer to take it out of our.
At least even for the next two years.
The art money by December thirty first, as far as.
Well, have it.
Okay.
Appropriate.
Appropriate, well.
Mr. Yagowski.
I, I'm agreeing with everybody here, but we also have to remember that it has to be a commissioner's suggestion that they have to come with the art money.
The money, the money, I think.
Our lost revenue.
This is lost revenue.
This is lost revenue, and they don't have to.
At all?
No.
Okay.
Not on lost revenue.
Okay, everything turned out to be lost revenue, so we.
Thank you.
Mr. Novak.
So, go ahead.
I might also add, in recent years, there has been legislation downstate to require us to give money to volunteer fire departments from public safety lit. There was a bill this year that was suggesting just that, so just, we should be mindful at some point, it may not be so optional.
Right, exactly. Who's gonna, who has the form? Guy, do you have?
I sent a modified version today. My email and guy would be on that, that email.
Could you look at that form?
Yes.
Good. Could you look at that form and modify it with the additions that we did? If you need help, Adam's very good at putting forms.
No, I'll get with Justin.
Just saying. Well, that.
I have an answer.
Yeah.
I, I have it, Justin.
So we'll have that ready. And we're just gonna go ahead, well, soon as the form's ready, we can go ahead and notify everybody, and we want to have a time and place. We'll let everybody on the council know when the checks are going out.
And they should be ready to be issued as soon as we get the paper, papers back? Do you need a date or time?
We'll, we'll set up a date, yeah.
Okay, we leave it to the president to help set up a date?
Yep, everybody will know.
Okay, good.
Next, Sheriff's Semiannual Commissary Report. This is informational only, that the sheriff shared with us. So everybody can review it. If you have any questions, the sheriff's always available by phone or in person. Next item is the Annual Report from the Lepore County Pioneer Cemetery Commission. Again, this is information that they are sharing with us. There's no action that we need to take on it tonight, so we appreciate that, Sue. I think Sue's on Zoom right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that our twenty twenty three budget that ended up. Okay, it was in the red. But we didn't overspend our but, our twenty twenty three budget.
Yep. We'll get it figured out.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Appropriation transfers and requests. Next item is Lepore County Recorder, requesting appropriation in the elected, elected officials' training fund for miscellaneous claims in the amount of two thousand and services and charges, education institute training, in the amount of eight thousand.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski.
Any questions for me about this?
Discussion.
On the question.
Could we change the format in the future, instead of saying request appropriations in the elected officials' fund, why wouldn't it say from the elected officials' fund? It gives that number, and where then it's going? Because it's confusing to the public about, they think it's going in there, and it's actually going out. So wouldn't we substitute the word from? This happens several times on this.
When it says in, it's within their own funds. When it says from, it's an additional appropriation, is what that's.
Well, we use the word additional appropriation then. So here, I understand it's coming from their.
Let me know how you want me to do it. I'll do it, it's fine.
It just seems to me it's a lot less confusing to the public and somebody reading the agenda if we say requesting appropriation from the elected officials' training fund, and they give that number. And then where it's going, I just think that makes more sense. We were not consistent all the way through, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just want to point out that, that it's account twenty two hundred that in the, in the course of twenty twenty four, the auditor's office is working to eliminate, so there is some confusion sometimes with different departments that have utilized that several times, and we're working closely with them to try and get, make it as painless as possible, so. So it's not a miscellaneous claims, it, it actually has an account name.
Yeah, the reason why that one's there is it's already been used, so it'll fill that, and then we'll go to that three hundred.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Lepore County EMS, requesting permission to appropriate an EMS donation fund for food for management meeting in the amount of four hundred ninety six dollars and twenty five cents. This is from their donation account, and it's just appropriating it.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Planner, requesting additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development for Community Crossings Matching Grant in the amount of one point five million dollars. Mr. Mitch Bishop.
Good evening, council. As you know, I appeared in front of you last year for the annual commitment letter for the Community Crossing Grant. That is a requirement of the grant that I received that. It was just let, I mean, let, it was a bid, and bids were open excuse me, last commissioner meeting. The winning bid was Reeve Riley, two million four, two million four hundred ninety four thousand and change. So with this grant, as you know, you cover fifty percent up to two million, and we did get the maximum amount, so we got a million. So before you, the bid came in at two million four hundred and ninety four, two million four hundred ninety four thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and ninety nine cents.
So it's not exceed one point five?
That works too, but if you did want to make it that exact amount, that's fine as well.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. President, one minute, five hundred.
Not to exceed or?
Not to exceed.
Second.
Motion by Yagowski, second by Rosenbaum, not to exceed one point five. Questions?
One question, really, this project is, is pretty much exclusively streets in Fish Lake, correct?
Um, yeah, I think I, I might email it a map, but it's been a while, Justin. There's forty six segments. It's actually, I spoke to end out the district office, and it's the most, as far as road segments, in the state of Indiana. It's usually, people only go for, you know, three or four segments, but this was, because of that, this was like the most work ever.
For the sake of the people in Fish Lake, who are going to be disrupted for a little while by all of this construction, do you guys have a plan to communicate to them how you're gonna be?
Yeah, so we did, we're in the process of hiring an inspector as well, so they'll be on the job twenty four seven. There's the mill machines out there, and the painting machines, they're gonna be out there. So we're to coordinate, there's gonna be a letter sent out too, to the residents, letting them know. We don't know exact timeframe yet. There's a pre-construction meeting we're gonna have with Reeve and Riley, and also the inspector and the highway department. That's not scheduled yet, but the asphalt plant's not gonna open until April, so we got a little bit of time.
Make sure they got good communication, Mr. Justin.
Yeah, that was, that was a big thing, especially when we talk about forty six segments, there's quite a few homes out there, hey?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna add, in similar fashion, I just received a letter today about thirty five or Indiana Avenue construction, and they have a meeting March sixth, so, and it's like a three-hour meeting to explain what's going on. So in, in similar fashion, they're being noticed and notified.
So the paving time is gonna be roughly twenty, it should only be twenty one to twenty four days. So lucky.
Some of those roads are dead end, I mean, it's gonna be, yeah.
Some of those roads are, they're the narrowest roads in our county, from paved edge to paved edge, or some of there are like thirteen.
Because they were built personally, they were never built for the reason, everybody knows why.
Right.
They're improper roads, that's why.
Do we normally do inspection on community crossings projects?
So when we started this program seven years ago, I thought it beneficial, just to make sure we get what we pay for.
Always good to keep.
And it's within that being state money, and we were getting, we're getting a million dollars practically every year for the last seven years. I thought it's a good practice. We don't have the manpower to go out there and make sure and run yields. And so it was, this is, I think, a good safeguard, and it's only around twenty, twenty thousand dollars on a whatever this is, two point five million dollar project.
Presumably, you're doing RFQ to determine which.
No, we have, we have two contracts for engineering services.
For the commissioners.
Yeah, one's Lock Nuler, and the one's USI, both, you know, one's in Lepore and one's in South Bend, but fairly local companies.
Thank you.
No, he, he hit the point on, you know, what are we testing, and we had a problem a few years ago, which the testing proved, and it.
We also do test, we do, we do core samples and do testing as well.
And I'm not trying to embarrass anybody on doing it, but, you know, insane, but we did.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for the great job you keep doing.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, remember that, he's on.
We, we should be coming up, we have two bridges, hopefully, we're gonna get awarded soon too, so that'd be Coon Bridge, you should have plenty of funds in that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Next item. Lepore County Redevelopment Commission, requesting additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development for the county planners. So, so salary stepping. Stipend, I was gonna say it. Ten thousand dollars. So we was coming out of the redevelopment commission, but it was determined that the redevelopment commission cannot pay a salary out of there. So it's gonna become part of the economic development program, but we need to add that to their funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Krunka. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. Lepore County Hazmat, requesting budget appropriation in local emergency planning and right-to-know fund. Other supplies in the amount of ten thousand dollars and other services and charges in the amount of thirty thousand. These are funds that he has that is given to him from the state. We just need to appropriate them so that he can spend them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Sheriff, requesting additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety or Riverboat or Wind Tanks or ARP for vehicles in the amount of six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
Good evening. This is a continuation from last year. I come to you asking for a motion of support for this money so we can get the orders in for our car, and I see that it has arrived on the agenda for this month for the appropriation. So we asked for support on that. One thing I will ask, maybe I'm gonna add something to this, is last year, the council had asked us that we look into auctioning our patrol cars off versus trading them in. We did that. I don't think it netted the amount of money we were maybe hoping to get for the patrol cars through the auction. On top of that, we had to pay extra insurance to keep those cars insured before they were sold. A couple of them, we had to replace the batteries, tires, and brakes on them before they could get sent off to auction. And two, we had to end up paying the auctioneers. I don't think we netted quite the amount that we were hoping for for trading cars or auctioning the cars off. So we're gonna ask that you allow us the leeway to trade these cars in. We're getting some preliminary information that the trade-in values are a little bit higher, so we're gonna ask for that caveat with this, the year's autos.
Mr. Yagowski.
Okay. I've gone to state auctions before, and I don't know where we got the information that we had to do all the work to cars before we pull them up for auction. So we sell cars, as is, I don't know where that came from, but I agree with you. If we would have done it the right way, we would, not you.
Right.
Not you. The auctioneers, that's all we ask. So the conversation is you understand whether we're doing or not doing it, we still haven't got a list of cars, what we can do with the cars we have, that's our most important part of it. How we get rid of the cars is a different conversation. So I didn't know what we, what, the rundown of the cars, give us the same thing you've given me in the past, because of these cars.
And we're working on it, we just had been waiting, because we don't know when these cars are gonna come in.
So do roughly, do you have nominee cars you would be getting rid of if that was the case?
I think there's thirteen cars. We were looking to get thirteen cars.
Okay, that's pretty normal, that's pretty.
That's normal.
Yeah.
What's the anticipated, uh, what are they saying?
Delivery date on the actual patrol cars, we're not looking, uh, to get them until the fall.
There'll be twenty twenty-twos, because that's how long ago we ordered them, just saying.
No, there actually be twenty twenty, twenty twenty-fives, yes. All right. Now, uh, Mister Yagowski, back to your point about the list of the cars and that, uh, we'll obviously reach out to the commissioner's office, see if there's any that. They they would like to have where we could keep in and stuff like that.
They don't tend to, what they do is they make their own deals and they trade their own cars.
Right, that's, uh, that's another issue with the commissioners, but we obviously will get with them, tell them what we've got.
But submitted both at the same time, so we both have copies.
Um, Adam.
Ms. Graves, if you would, uh, so if I remember correctly, we earmarked this money to come out of public safety lit. And as I look at the amounts available to for council to appropriate. And it says a hundred and twelve, two fifteen, forty is available, but also includes the motion of support, this motion of support.
So to speak, it it's built into the.
I'm sorry, after this amount is removed, you still have the balance that you see on there, the hundred or?
So we're sitting somewhere around seven ninety-seven, two fifteen right now.
Correct. Yeah, for the whole year.
So we just wanted to make sure it was in there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Although, is that actually the cash balance because we receive monthly distributions of public safety lit?
That is actually the whole year's total. Is that what you mean? Yeah.
Well, he, the cars aren't gonna be here till fall, so. Get some time to.
Mister President, motion to, um, to, uh. What, correct, we're we're for, uh.
Approve?
Approve, yeah, we're not approving, are we appropriating, no, we're we're supporting. Okay, so motion to approve out of public safety for the six hundred eighty-five thousand.
Second.
Motion by Yagowski, second by Mister Karanka, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting budget appropriation in the sheriff continuing education fund. For supplies and other services and charges in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars total.
Second.
Motion by Mister Cunningham, second by Mister Rosenbaum, this is just appropriating money within his account to give him that. All those in favor say aye.
Um, don't just quit money, uh, the process of eviction. Is that money still going into the continuing education, cause two thousand and seven, that was, okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Laporte County Building Maintenance FMEC. The fund was, uh, the, uh, check was delivered in the amount of ten thousand dollars, it's a, a supplement for the, uh. Maintenance director's money, we talked about it last month, so we just need approval to, uh, receive that and put it in the right account.
Has FMEC, um, sent the check in yet?
You got it sitting right there.
I have it now.
This year and last year?
No, there's no last year.
Just this year.
He was paid last year out of the maintenance budget. FMEC.
It is true.
Yeah.
So what was, is that all sorted out then?
I mean, it it happened if that, I don't know what you mean, but yeah, he was paid the full amount last year and it was used from the maintenance budget.
Was that the original agreement though?
That was maintenance decision. The agreement with FMEC was if certain things were done, those were not done last year, so FMEC did not. Provide the ten thousand dollars, so the fact that they took it out of somewhere else is their thing, it's, this isn't FMEC's issue anymore. This isn't, this isn't a, a signed. Promissory note that we're gonna, that, you know, this is gonna be, go on forever. This is, while it was being done, this is what we were doing, so. So FMEC gave the additional ten thousand dollars. For this year. But I think it's kinda. Silly to ask the FMEC to reimburse for last year. When he was paid out of the maintenance department, but I I'm open to hear what you got to say. Things weren't done out there the way they were.
I guess I think it's just a little quirky that he was able to move his money around within his budget in order.
It's not, it's not FM, I, that's, that's. That's their department.
I mean, we appropriate their funds, so.
Well, and if they got the money, why is FMEC giving them the money?
Good question.
To maintain buildings, they're the county's buildings.
So does FMEC feel comfortable that all of that's been sorted out?
I think, I think there's a, there's a plan moving forward to where this is, this all rectified even with the maintenance department, so there's some things. So hopefully it all gets worked out this year, I know there's some discussions, so.
Thank you.
Do we all in favor?
I didn't think anybody made a motion yet.
Oh, all right, well, feel free, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mister Cunningham, second by Mister Cronk, she's holding a ten thousand dollar check, I would think it'd be easier than that to take money.
I could rewrite it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose.
Is that two? Mister Cunningham and Mister.
Motion, I voted for it.
Who said nay?
Mister Yagowski.
Mister Yagowski, okay, all right, all right. Next item is juvenile center in Circuit Court requesting a budget appropriation for the Nova Fund. If you remember last, uh, meeting, we, we created the ordinance that. Govern the Nova Fund, so this is just the. Putting the money in a budget form.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mister Cunningham. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Laporte County Circuit Court requesting budget appropriations for the twenty-four, twenty-six juvenile diversion grant. This is the same thing, we're just budgeting money?
You're just budgeting money and the reason is because this is a reimbursable grant, so they're gonna spend public funds first and then they'll ask for it to be reimbursed.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rosenbaum, is it you? Who did that? Oh, seconded by Mister Molenour. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is requesting budget appropriation for the JV Audio Grant. In the amount of sixty-two thousand, this is the same thing, this is their grant money that we're just.
Reimbursable though, yep.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mister Cunningham. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Laporte County Adult Probation.
What, keep talking.
Request appropriation from adult appropriation from Adult Prob- Probation Supplemental Fund. For court computers, copiers, probation PCs, equipment. Um, in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. And then probation replacement of computers in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Mister Yagowski.
Uh, where did the forty-one oh seven and forty-one oh seven come from, because we don't have a forty, that count? And the other que- second question is, uh, copiers, uh, even if it's coming out anywhere, it's supposed to come out of the same fund, is that?
This, if this is coming out of his user fees, why, why is it a four hundred account? He doesn't have.
It's a four hundred account because it's a capital purchase, that's what copiers and that.
We're gonna take, we took it off a long time.
Are you putting it in a four hundred account for him to spend it?
That's what they're requesting.
That's all they're doing, they're not.
Again, we're, it's going to, uh, I'm a twenty-one oh two, yeah, going to a four hundred accountant.
It's going in a four hundred count, yeah, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
It's coming from twenty-one, it's inside of twenty-one oh two, it's being appropriated into a four hundred account, just like the others.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum, is it a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Yagowski, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item is request an additional appropriation from opioid restricted.
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted, I'm sorry. Uh, for the petty cash account that we passed the ordinance for, or which we only.
But we can't do this.
We'll hold this over to next month and.
For for future reference, though, we aren't worried about the opioid unrestricted fund, it's fine coming out of the adult probation user fee fund.
Good.
Going forward.
Thank you.
So we'll do that, put on next month as stated, Mister Cunningham.
It's not really additional appropriation, it's basically a transfer from the unrestricted opioid.
Well, they're not gonna use opioid.
Right.
But whatever, they they call, it's just so that we take the money from one to the other.
I just didn't know where you had wanted it from.
No, we're not doing tonight, so do we make a motion to table? Till next month or?
Just, you don't know if we need the table, we're just holding it over till next month.
Okay, so we're just holding over, okay.
Just put it on the agenda for next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Republish your preparation.
Yeah, thank you.
Next time.
Mister President, if you look at these, uh, round of these last three all say from, from, from. The next three, adult probation, there were two of them, that's why I'm asking for the consistency, I just think the word from reads easier.
I'll use it through all of them, yeah, thank you, yeah, no problem.
Next item is Laporte County Election Board requesting transfer from board members. To professional services for the micro vote contract in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
That's just moving within their fund, motion to approve.
Motion by Mister Rosenbaum, second by Mister Cunningham, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Laporte County Clerk requesting appropriation in the clerk's. Record perpetuation fund for part-time scanning employees and payroll deductions not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Having talked to, did you?
I spoke with Heather. Clerk Stevens, so, um, much of this is to support not just what has been done, which was the, the. Filing cabinets that were everywhere and in the hallways and whatnot, it's, it's other, uh, files, if I remember correctly, Clerk Stevens, correct me if I'm wrong. But it had more to do with, uh, marriage and death certificates at this point, or something similar?
Um, it's, it's going to, right now, we are working to get some juvenile records scanned. Uh, this is gonna be a continuous process, I mean, this isn't gonna be done in, you know, three or four years, there's, there's a lot to be scanned. But I like, I like that we can take it out of the perpetuation fund where that money is more difficult to spend. And it's not coming out of the general fund.
And it's a not to exceed, so if you don't spend it, it stays there.
Yes.
Is there any other, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mister Cunningham, second by Mister Karanka, on the, um. But all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? I just wanna bring up too that, uh, I would ask, and I haven't talked to a lot of people about this. But I would ask, um, Clerk Stevens to, um, check what the cost of a stamp machine is for the. For your department temporarily, so that during the election period this year. That you have a stamp machine in your office so that you, you can better.
Control.
Control the, um, ballots and everything that goes out. And then at our next meeting. What's that?
We're on it.
All right, at our next meeting, we'll talk about it.
Thank you.
And as soon as you get the information, though, feel free to share it with everybody so we all know ahead of time.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. And the final item. They, they're occupying two pages. The highway department, well, they did, they're the. Uh, request additional appropriation from Lit Economic Development or major moves for, um. Dump trucks in the amount of, a single axle dump trucks in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. A bucket truck in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. Generator for the building in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, forklift in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. That's it for that one. It's great evening.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, you?
So the dump truck is actually, um, goes, coincides with the one on the back page, we got reimbursed for our insurance settlement. A truck caught on fire, so to replace that, it'd be an extra eighty-six thousand on top of what the insurance gave us. So we wanna add that to our order that we got last year, that we're gonna be getting next year. So that's what that dump truck is. Um, and the generators are for Hannah and then we, the forklift, forklift will be a used forklift, so whatever we can. Get for. And the bucket truck is a new bucket truck, it's smaller than the one we have, but it'll be used at the Hannah and Rowan districts. I mean, we chasing trees every.
You don't have one?
No, we just have the one.
Okay. Mister Yagowski.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to kill you, I was on vacation, I just got back, but anyway, um, I I know all the question we need, the only I have questions about is a generator. So this isn't for you, it was, unfortunately, I don't think he's still here yet. Uh, we paid a lot of money for a generator from, a free generator from the federal government. And we paid a lot of money to get it back here, we never used it once, it's still available. We also had to generate on A Street, which we did not need anymore.
Repurposed that, that went out to their. Went to the county highway, I mean, the sheriff's. Sheriff, didn't you just get a generator at your garage?
Yeah, we got it from the, uh.
Eight Street. That's where that.
What happened to the generator, that's for you to ask, answer, we paid for a generator from the federal government. Costs us thousands and thousands of dollars, it's, it was expensive, it's free, but it caused us so much, we push it back here. We haven't used it yet, again, it's not for you, it's gonna, uh, Mister Bishop came to us and we paid for it, nobody, nobody used it since. I didn't get the chance to ask for.
You have a generator sitting around?
No, not that I know of.
Unfortunately, I thought he was still here and he left.
Yeah, he left. So with this one, we were quoted two different, um, units, different sizes, um. It's gonna be under fifty, but we don't know for sure exactly the amount, but the smaller one's like thirty. So whatever, it's for the Hannah shop. Yeah, and I don't know, I don't, yeah, I don't know where the, that generator would be.
I would like to at least put in there that we requested, find out where that's at, if it's not, if it's not available, then we can always just include it at that.
So we'll approve it, but we'll find out from Mitch and we'll get an answer from Mitch in the morning. We're tight, you calling Mitch?
So I make a motion with my assumption to.
Yep, if we can use that one, we will.
Motion by Mister Yagowski to approve all these with the caveat that we're gonna check on that.
Out of what fund, Mister Yagowski? Uh, the lit.
Lit.
Thank you.
Motion by Mister Yagowski, is there a second? Second by Mister Rosenbaum.
Question?
Question?
Um, can you explain the difference between the two quotes that were received, the one from Marquis Electric was for forty-nine thousand, seven fifty-five. And then the one from Current Electric was forty-four thousand, one sixty-seven, what's the difference between the two?
Two different sizes, um, let me see, the one Mark was quoted was.
They're attached, I think, in the packet.
Yeah, I'm looking at them in their both sixty kilowatt, um.
You'll see at the bottom there, there's one for forty-eight kilowatt, thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, but the, the one that was sixty kilowatt was forty-four thousand. So, so what's the difference between the two models?
Well, we don't, there's, Current Electric said we don't need the big sixty watt, that we can go with this forty-eight. For the Hannah shop.
Okay.
You see that on the signals?
Yeah, I'm looking at both of them so that we can go with the forty-eight kilowatt one, so are we going with the Current Electric quote then?
Well, that's the one we planned on getting.
Okay, cause what was attached to my packet was the one from Marquis.
Well, they're, they're both in here, we were just, whatever one of y'all decided y'all wanted, so I put both.
I don't know, didn't I see Current Electric?
Sent in the packet that, that, uh, Ms. Blazer sent, mm, a week or two ago, maybe?
Um, I sent it when I forgot on the agenda.
Yeah, but it wasn't in our, our council packet.
Um, so we got clarification on that.
Are you comfortable with us lowering the not to exceed from fifty thousand down to the thirty-five, eight twenty-seven?
Sure.
I'd make an amendment to the motion to lower the amount for the generator to be not to exceed thirty-five, eight twenty-seven.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, or, or thirty-six, if it's rounded, so there's a little bit of a little.
Round it to thirty-six.
That would be my amendment.
With question, uh, question, so we don't, you, you're able to do the maintenance on this, right, we're not paying for any additional fees, right?
Well, usually the maintenance department comes out and they service our generator that we have here, so I'm sure they, they come out.
No, but they, they tried to sneak it in before, trust me, take my word for it, so their oil changes are just checking on it, there's nothing that's complicated about it. So I just was making sure that we're not, we're not buying into a program. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Were we voting on the amended motion?
Yep, the amendment.
With the thirty-six, the whole thing.
But they agreed, they agreed to change your thing, so we're good on it, right off the bat. All those in favor again, say aye. Those opposed?
And for point of clarification, just got a note from one of, uh, Ms. Glazer's team. That, uh, that generator had a bad turbo and was auctioned last October.
Was never used.
Cause they had a bad, they had a bad turbo.
Paid, we paid fifty thousand dollars for a generator to bring it back. Paid, we paid fifty thousand dollars for a generator to bring it back. I'm just gonna say it was never, ever used.
How many years ago was that?
So turbos go bad by sitting there?
No, how many years ago was we get to it?
Seven years ago, we paid for it, seven years ago. Never, it sat there in storage, fine. Generators don't go bad.
Hey, Mr. Yag-
Would you mind having the member of your staff that's responsible?
If anybody has any issue that understands machinery, it, I don't care if it's just for seven years.
I, I'm curious about what Ms.-
I don't know about the generator.
Yeah, if you'd send us an email to let us know what you find out, thank you.
Alright.
There you go.
Next item is Laporte County Highway Department requesting appropriation from lit economic development or for other services and charges, uh, reimbursement for end dot funds in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. This is the insurance money?
No, so this is end dot, whenever they closed Highway Six last year, they had to, the detour was five fifty east and up on One Thousand South. This is money that they gave us to help pave that road. This is money that we got reimbursed and we're just actually put it back into our lit account for paving. So that's-
To approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Rosenbaum and Mr. Karanka.
Okay, well, I have a question, though, because this is going into a three hundred account, which I know you're trying to change all the accounts. All of our money's in a two oh, two hundred account, so this is gonna be separated from that one account.
This is going into the regular lit account, isn't it?
No.
What, yes, but what she's saying is the two oh, two hundred, so we were hoping, so what we were hoping is, since it's new money, we can get the three hundred started, but the rest of that money should be moved to three hundred as well, that's in the two oh, two hundred.
Well, we don't know how much we're using on paving.
I don't think you have it separated by pavement, though, the two oh, two hundred is nothing.
Nothing separated.
And three hundred isn't paving, three hundred is other services and charges, so it would cover everything that's other services.
I'm just saying that this is gonna be separated from the money we have now in our lit account, so it should be done for like next year to separate the accounts, because my money's gonna be all separated into different things.
Does it pose a problem to pay from two different places?
Well, I wouldn't suggest keeping it separate, I would suggest at the next meeting that we have it transferred from two oh, two hundred-
I don't think this isn't gonna be separated.
To the three hundred.
Well, I'll-
She's right, it is.
Yes.
She's gonna go to three hundred count, she wants to put it, so she can ask for a transfer next month to put it into a two hundred account.
Right.
Or put to three hundred.
Right.
You don't want it in the two hundred, yeah, cause it's not a supply.
Right. I, I get what the, what you're saying.
Yeah.
But, so I need to separate all my money, come to the next meeting and get it all divided up? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think you need it divided just in one account, but the account would be services and charges, because it's not a supply.
If, if I'm to understand, she's just trying to say that whatever's in the two hundred account, sorry, whatever is in the two hundred account, next month, ask us to move it, transfer it to the three hundred account, the entire balance.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, that's what I'm understanding, I'm hearing, if I'm correct?
If you don't wanna separate it, absolutely.
Well, I mean, some of it's gonna be, well, there's two millions going-
But if some of it is for services, you need to-
I have to have to figure-
Or else we'll just transfer it back.
Okay.
You won't have to be, if you, if you just ask for it, put it, put it on the agenda, what, you don't have to be there for that meeting.
Okay, yeah, so that's what that one is.
Alright.
Reimbursement from One Thousand South.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting appropriation from lit economic development for equipment, insurance settlement for the truck used towards purchase, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
That's what we got for the truck that caught fire.
This is what you got, so this is-
It needs to be-
Gonna be put in a lit to be applied towards the truck that-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rosenbaum, second by Karanka. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting transfer from Highway Economic Development for dump trucks, five tandem axles, two single axles in the amount of two million dollars.
This is out of our lit budget. It was for the motion to support the trucks that was done last February, so this money's gonna come from our budget.
This is the actual appropriation of that?
The money, the motion to support.
These are the trucks that we gave-
And when is delivery, or there's some already here?
It'll probably be next year still.
Still next year, so.
So is that, how are we gonna do that if we appropriate it, it's gonna need to be encumbered through, okay. Do we have-
Might get some this fall, hopefully, but I doubt it.
Most likely.
Do we have an exact figure at this point?
Uh, no, we do not. It's still just the, with the, we haven't, I don't even think the trucks have been actually ordered.
Okay.
It's just all back-
You're just sitting on a waiting list right now.
Question.
Mr. Yagowski.
So, with ordering trucks, y- y- when do you pay for them, when they come in?
Yes, once we get them.
Why can't we continue the same motion we had last year?
Well, cause next year, when I come, I'm gonna need to continue with more trucks.
Doesn't matter, you're not gonna pay for it, so why can't we continue with support?
We might get one this fall, you know what I'm saying, we don't know when they're gonna come in.
Then you can move it then.
We could push it till later.
If you're lucky enough, I doubt if you're gonna get any trucks this year, but if you do, then come back to us with the-
With the motion of support, you can order the trucks.
Yeah, the trucks are ordered, well, they might be ordered.
They're on, right, you're in-
You have the permission to order it, it's whatever you wanna do.
You can encumber as well with the motion of support, I would.
My motion, my motion is to support again the five trucks, and if they come back, when it comes in, we'll, we'll pay for it when it comes in.
So?
Or seven trucks, sorry, seven, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski for a motion of support.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, and I think Mr. Cunningham.
I would just point out that the advantage to appropriating over doing a motion of support is it makes it easier for accounting purposes for us to keep track of what we've spent versus, and what we've committed.
We always get, every time I get a report, it also says what money has been appropriated, so we always see it on our paperwork, I, I, I simply can read it, that's all I gotta do.
And it's might be trade off with the fact that we have to encumber most of this money next year or the year after. I don't know. Seems six, one half dozen of another.
Uh, I'm gonna make, uh, and I just, I do wanna comment, because once we are able to place the order, we'll know it all.
Right.
And I think that if this goes a few more months, and we can do it before the end of the year, which is what I would, like you agree, would love to see, we would prefer to do it at that time. So, let's, let's see if we can get-
So if you get an order, an actual order receipt that has the hard numbers on it, then come back, get on our agenda, alright? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting additional appropriation from roads and streets for a boom mower and a road mower.
I don't see a, I see multiples here, I see plural.
Yes.
Mowers. Several.
We're looking to get the boom mowers with the mangler arm, and then some roadside mowers. Uh, I got some quotes from John De, uh, Castonia for John Deere mowers, and we also have this, that just, we just got information on, um, they are designed specifically to cut brush. These, if we, these are in stock and on the ground, we can get these this year. Um, the John Deere mower, we can get one this year, and then the others will be on back order. Um, these are about fifty thousand dollars more, so we'd have to cut one of the mowers out, this was for six mowers.
And if you've driven the county roads in the last year, they desperately need to be trimmed. Mr. Yagowski?
So, you have two that'll be available right away?
With this.
With this, right, and you have, uh, possibly this year coming in, how many coming?
One more mangler from John Deere.
John Deere, okay.
And then the, the roadside mowers, if we drive, instead of three, if we go to two, those will be in next year.
Okay, so what was the total cost of those, those ones that are available right now?
The total cost would be one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars.
I mean, seven, five, basically, uh, for two of them.
Yeah.
And then John Deere would be how much?
So, the mowers from John Deere-
No, no, just the one, cause you're only gonna get one this year.
Yeah, just the one?
Yeah.
So, that one is two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and one cent.
I make-
Now, I thought you meant the total for the mowers?
No, 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 nope.
So the, the one, the one John Deere mower is two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and one cent, that's the mangler.
The two of them, the two of them that you can get right now?
Yes, and then, um, these, these two. This one is two hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars, we can get two of those this year, so whatever that equals, I mean-
So, I'm, okay, you got a calculator? Two seventy-seven, oh. And the other one's two twenty-two?
Two of those, alright.
Yeah, two twenty-two sixteen.
Two seventy-two times two?
Seventy-fourteen, fifteen, okay, one. That's five hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred ninety dollars.
Five hundred fifty-five?
Yes, for the three mowers.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion for, oh, please, let me, I, I don't wanna be a stick in the mud, but I have a, is this a QPC, or is this an approved vendor?
Source oil.
Okay, okay, so we're all good on that, okay. I knew it was single source, I already talked about that, okay.
I spoke to her earlier, but-
Source oil meets all of the competitive procurement laws.
Yes.
Been a little tied up today.
Stinkers bar?
So we have five, so you're at five, ba- basically five, seven?
Pretty much.
Okay, make a motion right now for five, five hundred seventy thousand dollars not to exceed, and then come back when the other mowers are available.
Okay, can we get a motion of support for the mowers?
I can, we'll do one at a time, so, yeah, so.
So your motion for five hundred seventy thousand dollars for the three that we can get our hands on right now, so I'm gonna second that motion.
Motion, motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, for three at this time, five hundred and seventy thou- thousand dollars.
That was just for those two, you gotta-
Oh, no, 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 you, we, I asked you what the original price for two of them were, and then I asked you what the, what the John Deere was.
Yeah, we gotta add the John Deere into the five hundred.
I did, I know, but I asked you, you did-
Oh, sorry.
I tried again, what were the price for the two, and then the John Deere?
Yeah, but I just did the two, sorry.
Bless you.
So do we have to add another two hundred twenty-two thousand to change?
Okay, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred sixty-
Not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, not to exceed.
So we changed the motion to not exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. You have a motion and seconds, or any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. President?
Yagowski.
I'd like to make additional mowers, uh, that we're talking about, uh, that we, that we, uh, motioned to support.
How many additional?
Two.
Two.
More. Motion by Mr. Yagowski for two additional, support for two additional mowers.
And in, in the rough number of how much that might be?
Number on that would be-
Four forty, five, five hundred thousand.
On an LRS.
Well.
You said two twenty-two.
No, they're these, the regular roadside mowers are one seventy each.
Okay.
So, three fifty.
So two of those, but they wouldn't be available till next year?
Yep. Everything's back on.
Well, it doesn't matter.
So what's your number?
Two oh one six.
It's approximately three fifty. So you have a motion of support, I'll second.
How much was it? Three fifty?
It was, it was approximately three fifty, so that's the number that we have, not to exceed three fifty.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, motion of support for two additional mowers for twenty twenty-five, not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand. Any other questions or comments?
A question, so, yeah, it would go with both these, so are we getting trade ins for any of these mowers we have currently?
Um, as of, we're, we have to use the act, the mo- actual mowers we have now for this year, cause we're not gonna get regular mowers.
Right.
Um, so next year-
It could reduce those to that.
Reduce this.
The boom, the boom mowers are gonna be in addition to what you have now, so-
Correct.
Is it performed differently?
Correct, but my, my point was, my motion, so, um, the trade in will o- offset some of the three hundred and fifty thousand, that's-
Yes, correct.
With this, we'll call it newer styles for brushing, the extra fifty thousand per, are these going to hold up better with what we've got in terms of both the conditions, and, uh, not to point any fingers, but I know what I face with a lot of turnover and newer employees and and you may have excess wear until some more experience is gained, toward this might be able to offset that wear from inexperienced use?
Yes, so the mowers we have now, we got in twenty seventeen, and they were not cut out for what we have to do in the county with the tree work. These are designed specifically to do tree work.
Okay, these, the, the ones specific can take a tree from all the way up here, all the way down to eliminate the stump. So, I mean, these are designed for clearing right aways along the roadside.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Yeah.
Good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item.
You guys.
Thank you. Next item is a salary ordinance amendment. One thing, is that thing need to be changed on the clerk?
No, all, all that's here is the building maintenance. I thought there were several other hirings that were done recently, and I would've thought that they might've been on here, but.
One of the things in a salary ordinance, can you check to see that the clerk's office, the part-time?
I think it, I think it is out of the perpetuation fund on there.
Make sure it's out of the perpetuation fund and not out of the general fund, just-
The, the part timers.
The part timer.
Because there was a fifty thousand dollar budget for part time in her department, and we just wanna make sure that because we just did the fifteen, that the people that were listed there were all, um, scanners, and so that they, that anything listed for them would be out of the fifteen thousand